Well, they might be short.
Sure.
No, you can only, you can only control it. Here it is.
Right after we only have the space to call, call, um, I was, uh, uh, Dr. B said let him speak during this time. He was there this morning.
Yeah, for the VP.
Yeah.
Yeah, to speak.
Not to speak before we break and I'm going to take pictures.
I'm going to have it in my hand. Brennan, Brennan?
No.
He went back, he had a dark type of... Yes. Oh, true. I have a picture of that when he got fired. A people...
Good evening, good evening, and welcome to the Township of Union Board of Education Organization meeting. I am Yolanda Coon. I will be facilitating this meeting until such a president has been nominated. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. Can we please all stand for the pledge of allegiance and to salute the flag?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, which we've all been waiting for, we have our Honorable Senator Cryon to administer the oath of office to our elected officials. I will call their names in no particular order. First up is Mr. Greg Nasta. As I call your name, please come forward. Do you have anyone here to hold the Bible or do you have anyone wishing to? And here you go. Come on, team.
Yes, sir.
Someone wants to hold the Bible as he...
Nancy can hold the Bible.
Alrighty.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I?
I. Greg Nasta.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support.
that I will support.
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
of the state of New Jersey.
of the state of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith.
and I will bear true faith.
and allegiance.
and allegiance.
to the same.
to the same.
and to the governments.
and to the governments.
established in the United States.
established in the United States.
and in this state.
and in this state.
under the authority of the people.
under the authority of the people.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I?
I, Greg Nasta.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I possess.
that I possess.
the qualifications.
the qualifications.
prescribed by law.
prescribed by law.
for the office.
for the office.
of a member of.
of a member of.
a board of education.
a board of education.
and that I am not disqualified.
and that I am not disqualified.
as a voter.
as a voter.
pursuant to.
pursuant to.
RS.
RS.
nineteen colon.
nineteen colon.
four dash one.
four dash one.
nor disqualified.
nor disqualified.
due to conviction of a crime.
due to conviction of a crime.
or offense.
or offense.
listed in.
listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
eighteen A.
eighteen A.
colon twelve.
colon twelve.
dash one.
dash one.
and that I will faithfully.
and I will faithfully.
impartially.
and impartially.
and justly perform.
and justly perform.
all the duties.
all the duties.
of that office.
of that office.
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
congratulations.
You may take your seat. Thank you. Thank you. You can put, oh, leave the Bible there. Next up, we have Mrs. Chastity Santana.
I'm left-handed. I'm ready. Yes, sir.
I?
I, Chastity Santana.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support.
that I will support.
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of.
and the Constitution of.
the state of New Jersey.
the state of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith.
and that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same.
and allegiance to the same.
and to the governments.
and to the government.
established in the United States.
established in the United States.
and in this state.
and in this state.
under the authority of the people.
under the authority of the people.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I?
I, Chastity Santana.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I possess.
that I possess.
the qualifications.
the qualifications.
prescribed by law.
prescribed by law.
for the office of.
for the office of.
member of a board of education.
member of a board of education.
and that I am not.
and that I am not.
disqualified as a voter.
disqualified as a voter.
pursuant to.
pursuant to.
RS.
RS.
nineteen colon.
nineteen colon.
four dash one.
four dash one.
nor disqualified.
nor disqualified.
due to conviction of a crime.
due to conviction of a crime.
or offense.
or offense.
listed in.
listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
eighteen A.
eighteen A.
colon twelve dash one.
colon twelve dash one.
and that I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
impartially.
impartially.
and justly perform.
and justly perform.
all the duties of that office.
all the duties of that office.
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
congratulations.
thank you so much.
And lastly, but not least, we have Mrs. Kimberly Scott Hayden.
I?
I, Kimberly Scott Hayden.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support.
that I will support.
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of.
and the Constitution of.
the state of New Jersey.
the state of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith.
and that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance.
and allegiance.
to the same.
to the same.
and to the government.
and to the government.
established in the United States.
established in the United States.
and in this state.
and in this state.
under the authority of the people.
under the authority of the people.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I?
I, Kimberly Scott Hayden.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I possess.
that I possess.
the qualifications.
the qualifications.
prescribed by law.
prescribed by law.
for the office of.
for the office of.
member of a board of education.
member of a board of education.
and that I am not disqualified.
and that I am not disqualified.
as a voter.
as a voter.
pursuant to.
pursuant to.
RS.
RS.
nineteen colon.
nineteen colon.
four dash one.
four dash one.
nor disqualified.
nor disqualified.
due to conviction.
due to conviction.
of a crime or offense.
of a crime or offense.
as listed in.
as listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
eighteen A.
eighteen A.
colon twelve dash one.
colon twelve dash one.
and that I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
impartially.
and impartially.
and justly.
and justly.
perform all the duties.
perform all the duties.
of that office.
of that office.
according to the best of your ability.
according to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
congratulations.
Alrighty, okay, so at this time, we're going to allow for five to 10 minutes for any kind of photo ops with the dignitaries or our Senator Cryon. We'll give you about five to 10 minutes. Thank you. Okay, and at this time, Mrs. Capiello, can you please take the official roll call?
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Here.
Mrs. Furia? Mr. McDowell?
Present.
Mrs. Benisi?
Here.
Mr. Nasta?
Here.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Here.
Ms. Santana?
Present.
Mrs. Capiello, please read the mission statement.
The mission of the Township of Union Public Schools is to build on the foundations of honesty, excellence, integrity, strong family, and community partnerships. We promote a supportive learning environment where every student is challenged, inspired, empowered, and respected as diverse learners. Through cultivation of students' intellectual curiosity, skills, and knowledge, our students can achieve academically and socially and contribute as responsible and productive citizens of our global community.
Okay, thank you. Open Publix Meeting Act notice. In accordance with the provision of the New Jersey Open Publix Meeting Act, the Township of Union Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof published in the Star Ledger and Union Town County local sources posted in the administrative building of 2369 Mars Avenue, Union, New Jersey, filed with the Township Clerk, and mailed to all persons, if any, who have requested said notice. The Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding items on the agenda or on any issue. Individuals need to identify themselves by name and address. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Issues raised by members of the public may and may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks all members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Comments regarding students and employees of the Board will not be responded to by the Board. At this time, we would like to have our attorney provide a brief synopsis of the nomination of Office of Presidency.
Board Council?
Hello? Hello, alright, that's better. Thank, thank you, Ms. Coon. So the following is taken from Board Policy 0152. The Board of Education shall organize at its first regular meeting by electing one of its members as President and another as Vice President. Any Board Member may place a Board Member's name in nomination for Board President and Vice President. A second on the nomination is not required. Election for each office will be conducted by a vote when the nominations for that office are closed. Voting shall take place by verbal roll call vote after nominations are closed. When more than one person has been nominated for a single position, the Board will vote on candidates in the order in which they were nominated. The person with the majority vote of all of the members of the Board shall be elected. In the event no candidate receives a majority vote of all of the members of the Board, the procedure shall be repeated until someone receives a majority vote of all of the members of the Board. If the Board is unable to elect a President and Vice President, the Executive County Superintendent shall appoint from among the members of the Board a President and/or Vice President.
Thank you. At this time, the floor is open for nomination for Office of Presidency.
Ms. Coon? I would like to nominate for President someone who has worked tirelessly to drive the success of our school district. Her plethora of endless knowledge in the field of education is sure to champion what our district needs. It has been a pleasure leading with her this past year, and I look forward to continuously work with her under her new direction. With that, I nominate Dixiana Carbonell.
Hearing and seeing no others, nomination for Office of Presidency is now closed. Mrs. Capiello, please take the roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell? Can she vote first?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Congratulations, and please take your chair. And I will defer to you, Madam President.
Hello? But I was going to have to use my teacher voice. Good evening, distinguished members of the Board, Senator Cryon, Mayor Bowser, Committeewoman Frazier, and Committeewoman Terrell, school leadership and district leadership, staff, guests, and family. It is both an honor and a privilege to address you this evening as the President of this esteemed Board. Together, we represent a collective committed to the vision, mission, and values of our school district and community at large. I am deeply humbled by the trust you have placed in me, and I'm excited about the opportunity to serve our schools, our staff, and our students. As I assume this great responsibility, I pray to God for the courage to do what is right, wisdom to discern the best path forward, and the compassion to listen with an open heart and open mind. While our tenure as Board Members these past couple of years has been met with a number of challenges, we are steadfast in our resolve. We will seize every opportunity afforded to us to create policies and opportunities that help engage multiple stakeholders, raise academic standards and student performance, support a thoughtfully executed district realignment, cultivate a safe and inclusive learning environment, maximize our material and human and professional capital, and improve our overall organizational structure, operational efficiency, and accountability. Thank you for your confidence in me. I am excited to move forward with all of you, united in making a meaningful difference. Thank you once again.
Now, I will open the floor for nominations for Vice President. Are there any?
Madam President, I would like to nominate for Vice President someone I have worked with on many committees, who has dedicated many years to educating our youth and is now working tirelessly with those that we entrust our students to, to educate, transport, maintain our buildings, and all those who are dedicated, have dedicated themselves to our youth. She is a voice of reason and a wealth of knowledge, bringing important and valuable information to our Board. So at this time, I'd like to nominate Kimberly Scott Hayden as Vice President.
Hearing and seeing no others, the nominations for the Office of Vice Presidency is now closed. Ms. Capiello, roll call, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes. I look forward to working with you, Madam Vice President.
I echo that, Madam President.
Now, would you like to say some words, please?
Sure. Good evening, students, parents, staff, elected officials, Senator Cryon, Committeewoman Frazier, and Committeewoman Terrell, and Mayor Bowser, community stakeholders and district administration. It is a prestigious honor that I hold in high regard as being elected and looking forward to serving as the Vice President of this amazing board and involving institution of educational excellence. I thank my husband Eric and my loving family, who honors and supports my passion for community service and public education. We, meaning the President Carbonell and my fellow colleagues, we look forward to a year of moving this district forward to establish great public schools for every student in the Township of Union. We, the Board alongside this administration, will work hard to continue to foster the very relationships required to ensure that the success of our students and that of the staff who give so much of themselves day in and day out. You guys are commended for the reassuring that you give our students and reaffirming their potentials while also holding them in a high, to high expectations because we know that they can do it. Whether it's within the halls of our school buildings or within the streets of this vibrant community, we will work to build the collaborative partnerships necessary to ensure that every child has the tools that he or she needs to be successful in their educational endeavors. We are expected to have a productive yet challenging school year, but we welcome every aspect of the, so that we can prepare for educational excellence here in the Township of Union. For this to be a successful year, we will continue to work hard and diligently to build trust, unity, and a sense of belonging with our families who entrust us with their most precious asset, their children. To the UTA and the administration, we will continue to work through Superintendent Benacosta and his team to make sure that we are honoring the careers and the expertise that you bring with you to our district every day. With intentionality and around professional growth and maintaining a growth mindset, we will build excellent educational spaces for our students to thrive. Through collaborative, collaboration and creative thinking, we will build a sense of belonging where all educators, including ESPs, are respected as they contribute to the success of the whole child. To the parents who take the time to be involved in their children's educational excellence, we thank you. We welcome you, and we hope that you will come out to support initiatives, but we also hope that you will continue to challenge every one of us as Board members to think outside of the box, bring forth new ideas for programs and student growth, to make Union the shining example where every student is seen, welcomed, and met at the level of where they are for who they are, regardless of their makeup. I believe in this Board. I believe in this administration. I stand firm with this community and support every parent who holds us accountable in moving this district upward and onward to achieve great public schools. We are Union. Thank you. Okay, we would be remiss if we didn't offer opportunity for our Mayor Bowser, our Committee Councilwoman Frazier, and Township Committee Councilwoman Sandra Terrell to please come and say a few words. Thank you.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Before we get started, I just want to say I have Patricia Garofrazer here and Sandra Terrell here with us representing the Township Committee. I know I speak for the Township Committee when I say 2024 was a fantastic year in some regards and a challenging year in others. And I also say I want to congratulate the new members and newly sworn in members to the planning board and the new officers. As I was alluding to, 2024 was a tough year in some instances, but recognizing that this is a partnership between the Township and the Board and that we're definitely there for you guys when you need the support. So if you guys need anything, let us know. But again, Dr. Benacosta knows this. He and I met on numerous occasions last year and kind of talked through some of the problems. And as your liaison, I stepped in on a number of meetings and listened and brought some of the information back to the Township Committee to review and kind of assist you guys. So feel assured that you guys have the opportunity to come to us and present your issues and concerns, and we'll do the best we can to help you through it. So again, Happy New Year, and we're looking forward to supporting you guys as much as we can. Thank you.
Congratulations, Madam President and Madam Vice President. I look forward to supporting you in all of your endeavors. Best of luck and best wishes for your shared vision for the students and our educational professionals. And it is beautiful to see such a diverse group of members representing our diverse community. Blessings and best of luck.
Congratulations. You know, it's a big deal. 2025 is going to be a great year. We are looking forward, as Jim said and Patty said, to working with you, making sure Union continues to be successful. So good luck, and we're here to help. Thank you.
And we have the Honorable Joe Cryon.
Good evening. I also want to just take a moment and congratulate Greg and Kim and Chastity for your reelection and special swearing in tonight, and thank you for the honor of being a privilege of being a little part of it as well. Congratulations, Dix. Congratulations, Kim, for your leadership roles and the selection of you tonight. It was mentioned, and frankly, Kim did as well in her talk, mentioned collaborative partnerships and the mayor and the members of the Township Committee who chose the opportunity to come tonight. I just want to reinforce that from a state level as well. We are going to continue to undergo tremendous challenges, whether they come out of a new regime in Washington, DC, frankly, what we do in Trenton and right here locally. So together, we're stronger. And just wanted to make sure tonight to reiterate to all of you, as I say to folks often, I work for you. And let's make sure we work together, because when we do that, we do what we all want. We watch children be successful in their academic achievements and lay a foundation for a successful future. It's a privilege to be with you all. Look forward to working with you along the way. Best of 2025.
Ms. Kuhn, before we continue with public comments, is it possible that I could take a picture with my family so that they can go out? And Ms. Kim as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're the President.
All right.
You know I'm gonna drop this or something, right? Three, two, one. Stand up straight. There we go.
Could we get the two of them by themselves?
Yeah, we need to, can we get the two of you by yourself real quick?
Sorry, Joe.
Three, two, one. Thank you. Family and friends. Look, she's so mad. It's all right.
Have a wonderful day.
David, you too. Do you want to tell everybody what kind of mic?
Three, two, one. Thank you. Now I'm standing straight. Is this staying here? Like this now? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, I'll come over there. I won't bring the mic.
Okay, we're going to resume. Comments from the public on all resolutions and all other matters. David Armentio, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everyone, and congratulations to President, Vice President, and the elected Board members. First two announcements. One, next Saturday, July, January 18th, the Union County Wrestling Tournament is being held here at Union High School. We've been hosting the Union County Wrestling Tournament for decades, so this is just another year for us, and it certainly highlights Union. And everyone comes here and knows Union when they're here to wrestle in the tournament. Secondly, this coming Sunday, the 12th, is open house at the Parsonage. The Union Township Historical Society has an open house. All the students are invited through the school and the UTEA. I know supports it greatly with little giveaways for all the students who show up and their families. Most importantly, the second project is underway right now for the semi-quinsentennial, the 250th anniversary of our country. We, through Dr. Rodriguez, we have initiated a logo contest here in Union where all the students in grades four through 12 are eligible to submit a logo that will represent the town for the 250th anniversary. And that's underway now, and the final submissions are due in March. The committee will select it, and that logo, the winning logo, will be used by the town and the 250th Committee for its projects for 2026. Thank you.
Madam President, I'm sorry, if I may make a comment. Thank you so much, Mr. Armentio, for bringing forth. January 18th, I just might happen to have a baby that might be wrestling in that tournament. I went last year, and one of the things that I realized is how great it really is, and I wish every sport would come to Union. But wrestling comes in, it comes in strong, and I'm gonna be honest, I wish we had more of our Union wrestlers in it, but it's a great event. I will be there proudly, and thank you for bringing it to the forefront. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Ann Margaret Shannon?
Good evening, Ann Margaret Shannon, 2591 Spruce Street, and Union Township Education Association President. The Union Township Education Association congratulates Mr. Nasta, Mrs. Santana, and Mrs. Scott Hayden on their reelection to the Board of Education. The UTA is also pleased to welcome incoming President Carbonell and Vice President Scott Hayden. The UTA does appreciate the nod from the Vice President as a partner, because we are a partner to this Board and the district leadership and to the community as a whole, and we expect great things to happen, working with you going forward in the future. So Happy New Year.
Thank you. Good evening, Virginia Jeffries. Miss Virginia Jeffries. Happy New Year.
Virginia Jeffries, 236 Brighton Avenue, East Stars, New Jersey. Good evening to all in attendance. Congratulations to elected Board Member Scott Hayden and Santana, and newly elected Board Member Nasta. Congratulations to elected Board President Carbonell and VP Scott Hayden. The concerns on the agenda are as follows. When do these appointments become effective that are on the agenda? And when do these contracts take effect? Three, what are the caps, the maximum amount, for the following? Taylor Law Group, Abruzzi, McDermott, Mastrow, and Murphy, and Willence, Goldman, and Spitzer. Four, when will the mandatory political disclosure forms be filed for? A, Taylor Law Group, B, Abruzzi, C, Willence, D, Suppley, Clooney, and Company, the auditors, and E, Fairview Insurance Brokers. Also, the Board of Counsel is only to attend Board meetings and not be a participant at Board meetings, as the Board Counsel is not an employee of the Board nor a government official. The Board Attorney only has a professional services contract, and they do not hold any authority with the Board or outside of the Board, and that the Board should stop this practice of having the Board Attorney participate in any way at a Board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. Any other cards? No? Okay. Now we're going to move to the reorganization part of the meeting. May I have a motion to adopt and approve the following resolutions? Adopt the NJ SBA Code of Ethics, Robber's Rules of Order, approve meeting nights, policy manual, designation of official newspapers, designation of internet website for official notification, designation of depositories for funds of the TWPUBOE, authorization of depository banks to honor and charge accounts of the Township of Union Board of Education, authorization to school business administrator to approve payment of bills between meetings, approve list of financial vendors, approve general counsel and special education counsel, Taylor Law Group, special labor counsel, Abruzzi, Prezis, McDermott, Mastrow, and Murphy, approve bond counsel, approve architects, approve engineers, approve auditor, approve Phoenix advisors, approve insurance broker, approve 504 Committee Coordinator, Rotino, approve public agency compliance officer, Kuhn, approve affirmative action officer, awarding contractor.
public agency compliance officer Coon, approve affirmative action officer awarding contracts Coon, approve custodian of records, Ms. Coon, qualified purchasing agent, Ms. Coon, approve affirmative action officers, approve designated person ADA, facility coordinator, integrated pest management coordinator NAHERA, approve treasurer of school monies. And I believe I got them all. So moved. Second. Any discussion? Ms. Capiello, roll call, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes. New business?
New business? Oh, sorry. I just wanted to congratulate our reelected members of the Board and congratulate our new President and Vice President. I'm looking forward to working with everyone again collaboratively to move our district forward, our administration, of course, our teachers, all the staff. It's gonna be a productive year. Fingers crossed we keep ourselves going, moving, and again, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Ms. Scott Hayden?
So very quickly, I would be remiss if I didn't ask for a moment of silence for one of our ESPs who suddenly passed away, Kathy Gilmartin, Secretary of Special Services, who served in that role for quite some time, suddenly passed away, and I'm just asking for a moment of silence on her behalf. And I will also follow that with asking the community at large, as well as those who are in attendance, to whoever you believe in and however you pray, to say a prayer for her daughter Caitlin, who unfortunately, at the same time, suffered a medical episode and is currently recovering. So that's a double thing that's going on with this family and at the height of 2025, where we often say Happy New Year, and we have so many things that we look forward to in our lives with our families, like this family is really going through something. And it touched my heart when I read that, first with Kathy passing, then getting the email today about her daughter. I just ask you to lift them in prayer, whoever you believe in, whoever you pray to, to lift that family up at this time. Thank you.
Amen. We would be remiss also if we didn't recognize the individuals that were not only in Las Vegas but also in New Orleans, though, you know, families impacted. We're living in very interesting times, and Madam Vice President, I do feel that prayer is gonna get us through. And of course, Jimmy Carter, past President, we would be remiss if we didn't recognize him here tonight. Thank you. For new business, I do look forward to working with all of you. Thank you so much for your support. And I would be remiss, again, if I didn't mention that in February, we will be celebrating and acknowledging Black History Month, Career and Technical Education Month, and in March, Women's History Month. So I look forward to what the district plans and showcases to celebrate those groups and events. So thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please? So moved. Discussion?
No.
Ms. Capiello, roll call, please. I am reading verbatim.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mr. Nasta?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.